I now call a June 11th, 2019 special meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Schatz lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by Councilmember Hancock?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to serve the city of Riverton in the capacity that we do. We ask that it please help us, that this evening we can have the Spirit to guide us, that we can know the best way that we can serve the citizens, that we can know how we can best conduct the business of the city. We thank thee for the opportunity to serve. We ask that it please help us to remember where all of our blessings come from. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Present.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Mike Bailey.
Some moved.
Second.
We got in there, didn't we? I have a motion from Councilmember Schatz and a second by Councilmember Corey Rota. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare a form is present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Larson and a second by Councilmember Schatz. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens comments, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding any of the items that are already on the agenda and will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Hello, I'm Tammy Hanchow with the U.S. Census Bureau.
Yes.
And I would like to do a presentation on the 2020 census.
Super. Tammy, we do have you on the agenda, so we'll call you up when we get there, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Trystine Grover and I'm here representing the Good Samaritan Center here tonight. I just have to give a shout out to Megan, she's awesome, and she sent you guys an email yesterday that has this letter, but I wanted to read it and then answer any questions you guys might have. Dear citizens of Fremont County, we want to thank all of you for the continued public support on which we rely on for our program's continuation over the past 26 years. Your contributions and volunteer hours have helped make our community a better place and have not gone unnoticed. You have helped hundreds of individuals and families within the Fremont County area. We are writing to you today in the hope we will continue to have your support during this time. On May 15th, our live-in staff left our program to pursue a higher education. Typically, we have a current client move into this position. However, we felt it was necessary to take this opportunity to do repairs to our facility and not fulfill this position at this time. Our two buildings are old and in desperate need of maintenance in order to continue providing emergency services within Fremont County. We are currently needing to reshingle our roofs, as well as do some renovating within our main building at 921 East Washington in order to comply with the regulations that help keep our clients safe while they take part of our program. The Fremont County Good Samaritan Center is still providing some emergency services during our renovation. Emergency services include emergency clothing and hygiene assistance, client advocacy, case management with referrals, and the T-Fat Program which provides emergency food boxes through our partnership with the Wyoming Food Bank of the Rockies. We are generally open Monday through Friday, and all services are free to community members that meet the income guidelines mandated by our grant requirements, as well as the federal poverty guidelines. All community members must pass a breathalyzer and be sober due to the documentation requirements and our facility's policy on a zero tolerance for alcohol or drug use. All services are provided Monday through Friday, typically from 9:00 to 11:00 AM and 1:00 to 3:00 PM. We are reaching out to the community at this time in order to let you know what our needs are, so we can reopen our facility and continue to improve the lives of individuals and families that depend on our program to survive. These repairs, although minor, are going to take the community's support to complete so we can continue providing emergency shelter and services within Fremont County as we have for the last 26 years. The Fremont County Good Samaritan Center Board of Directors is in need of people that want to see our program succeed, and also the citizens that rely on us. We need people with a drive to make our communities a better place and are willing to reach out and find opportunities to do so. We have vacant seats on our board that need filled as soon as possible. Letters of interest can be sent to our mailing address or email at this time. Over the years, donations have supported our program and they keep us operating. We continue to need monetary donations for building repairs, as well as volunteer hours to complete these repairs and get the building ready. We will eventually be accepting donated clothing, household items, hygiene products, paper goods, and food when we reopen. However, we are not in need of these items right now. The community has kept us well-supplied prior to this transition, and we have more than enough to help community members currently needing these items. If you would like more information on how you can help, please contact our organization. Again, thank you for all that you have provided us over the years and what you do for our community. It is because of people like you we are able to help those in crisis situations and be a place of refuge for those wanting to get a hand up, not a handout. We look forward to being able to get the necessary repairs done and be able to have a re-ground opening as soon as they are completed.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions?
How many members are on your board?
Right now, three, and they have been on there, our oldest member that has been on there has been on there 24 years. The other one was 22, and then our third has been on there, we're thinking about 12. So he can't remember, he's been anywhere between 10 and 15. So we're needing some new blood and people that are ready to help get our organization back to what it needs to be.
Anyone that's interested to be on your board, they should send their letter to that address, correct?
Yes.
So even if they-
Or contact me, our email is really easy, it's FCGSC@Wyoming.com. And that's Fremont County Good Samaritan Center, all lowercase, at Wyoming.com.
Super. And I'm sure that if they call, the city will know how to get those to you too.
Megan needs a raise, I swear. I told her this yesterday.
Megan is great. We're glad to have her. Is there any other questions anybody would have?
Just thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thanks a bunch, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? We'll go on to item eight then, public hearing consideration of firework permit application for the Wind River Hotel and Casino and the Wind River Rendezvous Committee. Would the city clerk read the report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor and council before you tonight for your consideration are two firework permit applications. One is from the Wind River Casino for the Northern Arapaho Tour Rodeo at the Riverton Fairgrounds on June 14th and 15th from 9:30 to 10:00 PM. And the other one is from the Riverton Rendezvous Committee for the 39th Annual Rendezvous Balloon Rally at Valley View on July 20th, 2019, from 10:00 to 10:45 PM. The conditions of the permit applications have been completed, the proper fees have been paid, proper notice to the public has been advertised. We received the letters of recommendation from the fire chief, and maps were included in your packet which display where the fireworks will be displayed. In addition, representatives from each of the entity are present, should you have any questions. Based on the information provided through the application process, staff recommends approval of the two firework permit applications as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, would you like to add to that?
No, there will be about five minutes, our firework display, right after the rodeo, between 9:30 and 10:00, whenever it's over. And I think it's just on Friday, just to let people know there's a rodeo and come the next day, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Conrad? We appreciate him coming. We appreciate the tickets. Thank you very much.
We do, we appreciate everything you guys have done for us. And this year, tomorrow, we're having a youth rodeo, and we've worked with the Riverton Youth Rodeo Group. And so it's going to be one of their sanctioned rodeos.
Oh, good.
And we've included, it's open, we've included other members can, other youth, you know, those from the tribe or anywhere else that's not really a part of that group can participate. It starts at 10 o'clock in the morning, it'll probably go about six to seven hours. And it's free for everyone. And then on Thursday is open slack. I think altogether, we're somewhere between 650 to 700 people that are participating in the different events. So it's a good-sized rodeo. And a good part of those, well over a third of them will be participating on Thursday, because there's only so many that they put on a Friday/Saturday. So all the extra go, they're still competing for all the same prize money, you know, for the three-day rodeo. And the tickets, we have seniors and youth are $5, and adults 18 to probably 55 or 10. And so, but it should be, should be a good event.
Thanks. Appreciate you. I think, is there anybody that would like to speak to the rendezvous committee? Jim, you want to explain what the rendezvous committee is doing?
Your Honor.
Your Honor, that would be Mr. Carr.
Oh, good.
I'll just stay right here for this. It's number 39. It's coming up very much faster than I would like it to, and I'm beginning to hyperventilate just a little bit. But the fireworks show is one of the best in the state that they put on for the Rendezvous Balloon Rally. We have a great time, so if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Is it, it's going to be up on Airport Hill again?
Correct.
Okay, and do you have an estimated time of arrival?
It'll start at about 10:00 or when it gets dark enough and go, usually it's about 15 minutes long. They may be a little shorter this year.
Okay, super. Any questions? Great. The Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing on the fireworks permit.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and all applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move to close public hearing.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilman Rota. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the fireworks permit application for the Wind River Hotel and Casino and the Riverton Rendezvous Committee.
Some moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Now, Tammy, we're ready for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for inviting us to speak tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk about the importance of the census in 2020. My name is Tammy Hanchow. This is my contact information here, should anybody have any need to reach me directly after this meeting. And I will also have this at the end of the slideshow, so you can jot that down at that time, too. I'd also like to introduce my colleagues that have joined me. Partnership Specialist Stephanie Freeman from Cheyenne, and Tribal Specialist June Shakespeare from Fremont County. So I don't want to take up very much of your time this evening. I know you have a lot of business on your agenda, so I'll move through this as quickly as I can. And that's why I'm saying if there's any questions afterwards, please feel free to reach out to me. So, why do we do a census? Just throwing it out there, does anybody know why we do a census?
We need to get a count of population in the United States.
Absolutely. It's mandated by the Constitution in Article 1, Section 2, that every 10 years we get a count of all people in the United States. It is started in 1790, and we will be doing our next one in next year, in April, in 2020. We do this for a couple of reasons. One is for apportionment. So we have 435 seats in the House of Representatives, and that never changes. Based on population, though, the number of seats that each state can seat changes. And so, based on 2010 results, you can see that there were a number of states that lost a few seats. There were some that gained one, two, or four seats. And so this is an important feature of the census and why we do it. Of course, 2020 results will be based on the census that we do in next year. Another reason that we do the census is for funding. And to be honest, this is why I got in the game, because I think that the programs that are funded or helped funded by the federal government are very important to all of our communities. Programs like WIC, Head Start, Veteran Services, Victim Services, Medicare/Medicaid, Highways and Construction. It's all partially funded by a lot of these programs that are based on the amount of population that we have in our state. And so, the federal government has about $675 billion to give across the country. And based on the population, they send those amounts to the state, and the state determines which areas get which. So that's another part of the apportionment, is the states can determine redistricting as well. So how can local governments and community partners play a role? And this is why we're here this evening. We form complete count committees across the state, actually across the country. Partnership specialists across the United States are forming these committees in local areas so that you're kind of like the appendages of the Census Bureau that can reach into your communities. You know what your communities need, you know the trusted figures in your community, and you're able to mirror your committees very much like your community with the diversity. So we always look to tribal, state, and local governments to form these committees. And basically, what do they look like? And so that's where we're going to move on. The goals and the challenges of these committees, why do we form the committees? We want to motivate people in our communities to respond. The more people that access our self-response surveys that go on, it saves taxpayer dollars. And it also helps to make sure that we have adequate participation. We're also wanting to, as committees, assure that our respondents' data is confidential. It's safe to fill out the forms, their data is secure. The information is protected by Title 13, which is, it basically says that we cannot share any personal identifiable information or business identifiable information. Everything that we send out and distribute to the public's eye is in aggregate statistical format. And in your packets, you can see, there are some quick facts that you can look through. That is essentially how the information is sent out. It's always in percentage. We're not able to share personal information to agencies or individuals. It's also important for our committees to educate about the importance. One of the things, like we talked about, the many programs that are important to our communities. Each community knows which programs are important to their residents in that community, and so they're able to talk to them, and it's coming from trusted leaders, people that people see in their communities, people that they trust, so that's one of the goals of the committees. Excuse me. And then we also want the committees to help support communities in their mobilization efforts. A lot of events happen in the communities, like the Safe Kids Days, and the committees can help make sure that those events are facilitated by the census and that we're able to use those events to help get our information out, to get as much participation as possible. So the complete count committee tries to mirror what your community looks like. And these are a lot of the different organizations that you may consider for your committee. The media, your business leaders, nonprofit organizations, ex-offender organizations, faith-based, whether it's churches or non-denominational, education, K-12, and also higher education. You have the Community College, and the University of Wyoming has offices here. Groups that work with homeless veterans and immigrants. Another big portion of the committee is recruiting. The state of Wyoming has about 6,000 jobs that the census will open up across the state. So hiring census workers and address canvassers. So that's a big part of the committee, getting that information out, especially to people who might be looking for a part-time flexible job with, you know, that pays pretty well. One of the things that I am very excited about is this is the first year that people can respond via internet. They can 24/7 log on using their mobile device or a laptop or a computer. It's available in 13 different languages, and I think that this is just a great, a great way to break the barrier of participation. And people can take the time to sit and consider the questions that they're answering in private quarters so that they don't feel like they're having to answer to somebody at their door at that point. It's also, will be available via phone. They'll have a phone number that they can call and talk to a live person, once again in private quarters. It'll also be available in traditional paper form, where they can fill it out on paper and send it back. And then we will have people, census workers in communities, to ask the questions in person as well. This will happen, the online internet survey will start on March 12th, and that will go through July 24th. So it's a quite extensive time for people to respond. And talking about time, these are just some of the key dates for the 2020 census. The self-response does start on March 12th. So in January and February is when we will be really working with the public to inform the public that the census is coming, this is why you want to do this. So those two months will be heavily, you know, working with the public and educating them about it's safe and it's relatively quick. Census Day is April 1st, and there are several communities that are hosting events to engage their communities and to get people out and excited about the census. For people who don't self-respond, so internet, phone, or the questions as the events throughout that time, that will start in May, where people will go and talk to people who haven't responded yet. The data collection is complete in August, and the information is sent to the White House by December 31st. General timeline there. There are several tools available for a committee, so you don't feel like you're alone. First of all, three of us here, we're your resources. Statistics in school is a great resource for your education partners. And there will also be more information coming out, I think it's September, that we will be mailing, every high, every school in the country will get a packet for statistics in schools, and it's a way for teachers to work with their students to teach about the census and statistics. There's also, the website is available to, with flyers, with information, with materials, and there's a lot of materials available for, to help the committee in their efforts. There's also social media, we're available on everything that's out there. A real easy way for your partners to get connected to the census is just to follow the census page and to share that information out as the census sends out information to their followers. And then, jobs. We do have several jobs available in many communities across the state. If anybody is interested, it's easy to apply. You could just go on to 2020census.gov/jobs, and they can apply right online. Once again, my contact information, if there is any questions after we leave here today, feel free to contact me, and I would be happy to. My phone is Dallas, but I'm actually located in Casper. So if you decide, and I really hope that that is a decision that you come to, to form a committee, I would be available to come out to do a CCC training, to kind of walk your committee through the steps, and we'll go more in-depth into what the census entails, and it would be fun, too.
Sure.
Are there any questions or anything?
Kyle.
Your Honor, do you use the United States Post Office data, which there is considerable on?
Do we use the U.S. Post Office data?
I mean, they've got every address in the United States and homes, and-
We actually work with all the cities and counties, and we're sending out, the census sends out constant surveys and that kind of stuff to get addresses updated. So we're constantly doing that throughout this 10-year period, have been doing that so that we have those updated addresses.
So you don't use the post office?
I, you know, it might be part of their system that they do. This year is their first time that they're actually using a more automated system, so they do try and take in a bunch of different things. But they do try and work with the cities and counties to get what they have for addresses and those types of things as well. And then we do hire those address canvassers who kind of go out and verify addresses, and then if there's any new developments, housing developments, and that-
then if there's any new developments, housing developments, and that kind of thing, they'll put those into the system, so we have those as well, so that we try and have everything. The one key thing that we have, especially in Wyoming, is that a lot of folks don't get home delivery. They, you know, that they live in communities that just don't do mail delivery, so a lot of folks do PO boxes. And we, at the Census, do not mail anything to PO boxes, and because the Census is based on household data. And so for those folks who don't have that kind of mail system in their community, that those are when we hire those folks to actually go to their door. And they don't necessarily have to do that, you know, in-person form. We'll leave a form at their door, and they still can provide online response, as long as they have an actual physical address. That kind of is the key part to anything with the Census.
Thank you.
We just won't mail anything to PO boxes.
Stephanie.
To give you guys some background, in February, Councilman Hancock and City Administrator Tony Tolstad and myself were in Cheyenne, and we, and on the last day, there was, every day, there's different information that you can attend, and the Census information was listed for that last morning, and I kind of felt like I got the short straw, because that's where I was headed, was to the Census. And when I got there, I was really pleasantly surprised by all the information that was passed out. And I would like to encourage all of the people of Riverton that can and will to get involved and to participate in the Census. I got some information that in 2015, the state of Wyoming received $880 million from the U.S. Census. And it's all based on that information that we send in. So the better we, the better the information is, the better opportunity that we get to receive funds from, back from the federal government. So I think your job's really important, and we'll discuss it amongst ourselves and see if we need to set up a committee, and then we'll reach back and have you come help us. We're glad you're not in Dallas. We'd rather have you in Riverton than Casper.
I'm glad I'm not in Dallas.
Any further questions for these ladies? Tim?
You were talking about a CCC. Does that have to be something that's set up by a local government? Because it looks like, from what I was reading, I mean, that just, even community leaders, tribal, state, local governments, anybody can set these up, is that right?
That is true. And there are some complete count committees that are based on different organizations. So I've heard of some veterans' communities that got together and had some CCCs set up. So it does not have to be spearheaded by local government. It's actually the norm, because if you have the local government as the hub, and then everybody, all of the other members, kind of working with the local government, it's just kind of the usual way that it's put together. But there, yeah, it doesn't have to be that way.
And then, have you spoken to the county commissioners at all?
I haven't personally, hasn't...
I've sent out information, just kind of like Tammy did with you guys, and I haven't actually gotten response back.
Okay. Just was curious. I mean, that'd be a good, same thing, they have public meetings that you could go to, that you could present to, kind of like you did now. I mean, a lot of this is more important than we would care to really understand, or, you know what I mean? And so it seems like that'd be...
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, it seems like that'd be a good place to go. It's another public meeting that...
And we do have some communities that have the county and city working together, and so it's bringing together all those resources, so that it's just not one entity kind of, you know, doing all the work or stepping on, you know, crossing over each other, those types of things, they're working together. So some communities have chosen to do that as well.
So we could have a county-wide committee?
Yes.
So we could get all of the mayors, we maybe run it through FTAG through...
I did that up in Sheridan, and we had several mayors, and the different school districts came together and had representatives from, at the meeting and that type of thing.
And how much work is required of that committee?
It depends on the committee. You know, the different events that you have going on in the committee, the community as to what, you know, folks want to do. The one in, you can talk about the one in Casper, too. We have, I think, probably close to 50 members.
Wow.
In Casper, and so they're able to then break out into subcommittees. So then different people are only working on certain sections of what they're trying to do. So it's not everybody working on one thing. They're all, you know, have different areas that they're working on.
And these 6,000 jobs that you mentioned, those are all Wyoming jobs?
Yes.
And are they part-time or full-time, or where are they?
Um, there's a vary, they're various. The ones that we are hiring for now are part-time flexible positions. But we have hired some full-time positions. So Stephanie and I, and I believe June as well, we are all full-time temporary positions. But we do have the address canvassers that we were talking about earlier, and the enumerators, those that go into the communities to give surveys to the residents. Those are part-time flexible positions.
Okay. Fantastic. Appreciate your efforts, guys. Have a safe trip home. Public hearing to consideration, for consideration of Resolution Number 1392, fiscal year 19 through 20 budget. City Administrator's report, please.
(laughing) Apologize, Your Honor, we're having technical difficulties for just a second when we have multiple presidents.
(laughing)
Perfect. Your Honor, this will take me just a moment, I apologize.
No problem.
It's refreshing, Tony, to see that other people have problems, too.
Minor significance, sir.
We got an expert now. Stand back.
Alex is here to rescue you.
Yeah.
(laughing)
Time.
Rodeos.
There's a rodeo coming, I thought that was a joke.
I have a horse you can borrow.
Very well, thank you, Your Honor. It's nice to be here tonight after starting this in early March, and here we are in early June, finally giving you the budget presentation for fiscal year 2020. I will save my appreciation to staff for the end, I can't say enough about them, but I'll get into that a little bit later. I always like to begin the budget with a little bit of a quote, and it occurs to me, I use this one, I would look back over some old presentations, and I use this one too much, but I always like the quote that "A budget is telling your money where to go instead of wondering where it went," from Dave Ramsey. And that is essentially what we strive to do. We have a good plan, and like most plans, we hope that it survives first contact. With that in mind, we can get right into it. We have, as an overview, we're looking at a total budget this year of $25.5 million. This is across all funds, and, but this is compared to a $29 million budget from the year we're currently operating in, that when we were doing this a year ago. This is a decrease of approaching $3.5 million, or about 12% from the prior year. We always talk about operations in capital, separate. Capital in this budget is $9,576,000 and change. This is across all funds also, so general and enterprise, compared to $12 million, almost approaching $13 million in fiscal year 2019. This is a decrease of $3,346,000, or about 26% from the prior year. Capital expenditures in this budget make up 37% of the overall budget. Keeping in mind that these budgets are divided into basically two main categories that we talk about the most. One is the general fund, and the other is the enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, sanitation, and airport. We sometimes discuss airport in terms of, I think Kyle rightfully calls it a merit fund, and that's a good way to describe it. So what we'll do is first go through our general fund, have a little bit of a discussion about that, get into our enterprise funds. And at the end of this, what we would like to do is have a little bit of a presentation about some of the items that we know are going to be facing our community in the coming year. It all comes down to the money, that's where it hits, where the rubber hits the road. So that's what we want to talk about a little bit tonight. With that in mind, oop, nope, I'm right. Keeping in mind throughout this, that we require an 18.5% reserve policy. This is a policy that you only recently modified in how we calculate, but that was for clarification and to make sure that it was more up to date. So this budget, rightfully so, contains that 18.5% reserve. Revenues in all funds exceed operational expenses, with the exception of the airport, which, and we will talk about the airport in a minute. We are aided by reserves slightly in water, wastewater, and sanitation as presented. These are largely in part due to capital expenditures. It is important that the rate study that we have been working on is forthcoming, we're finalizing that. The budget that you have, presented to you, does not contain any increases in utility costs. So the enterprise funds are not seeing a rate increase based on these numbers. This does not mean that you will not consider a rate increase, but it does mean that at this time, we've calculated your budget to be balanced without it right now. But there are future capital needs that are going to have to be addressed within that conversation. So I don't want to give everybody the false hope that, okay, we're not going to have that conversation this year. That is going to be a very big conversation this year, and it's going to be... General Fund, sorry, yeah, jumping. There we go. Keeping in mind the general fund, the general fund revenues are estimated this year at $3,000, almost $400,000, compared to about 12.3 last year. That's the amended number, by the way. This results in approximately a $945,000 decrease. We do see increases in victim witness grant and funding, and slight increases in High Plains Power and Black Hills Energy franchises. However, unfortunately, we are seeing some estimated decreases in licenses and permits, charter communications, Rocky Mountain Power, CenturyLink franchise fees, sales tax, cigarette tax, mineral royalties, and supplemental funding. That's a, that's a lot. We'd like to see those switched up a little bit, and we'd love to see that, but that's not always the case that we have in front of us. There's a decrease in supplemental funding over prior year actuals. However, the amount budgeted is about $18,700 over the fiscal year 19 amended budget projections. That's just a little piece of information. Moving on, sales and use tax are probably our largest single source of funding for the general fund. And as such, we also use those to track economic activity within our community. My next slide is a graph that is, I'll discuss only briefly, but it allows us to help track and to see what kind of activity that we have. A lot of you have seen it, some of you haven't. We have a 1% decrease in sales and use tax compared to the fiscal year 19 that we're operating in right now. Keeping in mind that grants account for 14% of the entire budget. Staff oversees 22 grants totaling over $3.5 million. Of that $3.5 million, 3.2 of that is capital. Why do I tell you this? Because it is important, as we have these conversations about where we spend money, how we spend money, and how we develop programs, no matter what those programs are, it is easier comparatively to build a capital facility, to build the brick and mortar, than it is to operate it long-term. That becomes a significant challenge to us. So when we have those discussions, one of the things that staff always wants to say is, you know, it's, a lot of people will give you a grant to build something. It is very difficult to find a grant to fund the operation thereof. And you can see that here. Of this, of between 3.5 and 3.2, is the amount of money that actually goes towards operation comparatively in our grants. That's important. That's why you see a lot of our grant, grants in our utility funds, where we build facilities and the like. We do have a grant for an officer in one of our departments, and we see that a fair amount. That eats into that $300,000 you see right there, and that's just one of the grants. Keeping that in mind, I had talked about economic development activity being tracked. So what we have here is, this particular spreadsheet is something that me and I work with all the time. And this allows for us to use past years to try to figure out, on average, how much of a given year is going to be collected in a month. So we use past data, the percentages collected in those years, in order to have an educated guess about what we expect. And then we say, okay, we collected this much, and we should have collected this much. How fast, how high and how low are we? I am pleased to say that this year, we're going to end the year $23,000 heavy in, for our fiscal year 2019 variance, which is what you see, $23,445. But if you look up just a couple lines on the right, you'll see that we were within $200 of an estimate of $1.85 million. I wish I could predict most accounting items within that margin. I'd, we'd probably all be very, very rich. But obviously, we ended the year a little better than we, and we had a couple spots there that you can see, such as in April, where we came in $21,000 low. So we watch these. Keeping in mind that as we watch these, one of the things that is always concerning to us is that these are operating two months in arrears, two months in arrears. So what you're seeing right now is what was collected two months ago. So when we get those, and we get one that is tough, okay, we start getting nervous. We get two that are tough, or real tough, then we have to start responding quickly, because we already know that we're behind the eight ball as soon as we get those numbers to begin with. Those funds that we've talked about in the general fund go to, go to support all of these different areas. Of course, staff report shows that there's a little bit more detail, but these are a lot of the items where we interact with the public on a daily basis, our police departments, our parks, our administration. So these are, these are all of the areas that we actually work with the public on, and they're generally funded, and they're funded by the general fund. The general fund revenues at 11.3 and operating expenditures of $7 million. This includes the $290,000 proposed this year for community service contracts, as well as $268,000 for airport subsidy for operations, $215,000 for the airline minimum revenue guarantee. We are also transferring $84,000, almost $85,000 to reserves, not from reserves. So that is being put away. Why? Because we had some cuts this year we had to make. One of the challenges that we have, that's probably the most difficult for staff, but they do such a good job of, is that every request that we have has merit. Nobody's putting in, hey, I want a popcorn maker, or hey, I want a snow cone machine. That's not the kind of stuff we're talking about. We're talking about mowers, and we're talking about vehicles, and hey, can you limp it along for another year? Those are the tough conversations. One of those conversations had to do with a vehicle in public, I believe it was Public Works. And that, we said, hey, that was one of the last ones, we, on the last, on the cutting block, and it took us over the line. What we want to do, and what is proposed, is to take that money and keep it in reserve, knowing that that's going to help get that truck next year. So we do those things on a regular basis, where we want to say, okay, we can't do it this year, but let's put a little bit away. That's what that is. It also serves as just a slight amount of cushion, that, hey, if something comes up or something changes, or we have to make a modification. And some of those I will talk about later, because that could happen as well. With that in mind, capital expenditures in the general fund are 4.3, almost $4.4 million. This includes $24,000 transferred to Economic Development Fund, and we'll talk about that transfer a little bit and what that is. Giving in the general fund, we have a number of different items that I would draw your attention to here, but the ones that I really wanted to talk about, to draw your attention to are stormwater, our new 9101 system and our ERP module, and for good reason. Stormwater is one of those items that is currently being discussed by the legislature as a potential, as a potential enterprise fund. That would, the legislation that is being proposed, or has been proposed in the past and will likely come back, would give cities the ability to make stormwater an enterprise fund, and to fund it as such. Currently, all of the money that goes for stormwater is coming either out, is coming through the general fund. That takes money away from other things, such as police services and the like, whereas council, with the new legislation, could consider different funding mechanisms. That's important, especially here as we look for... That's important, especially here as we look towards, uh, long-term capital, the programs that we're doing, uh, some of the stuff we're spending on money on this year is very much in that wheelhouse. We know we have a new nine-one-one system. That's going to have some effect on the, on some of the revenues I'm going to talk about later through the nine-one-one system, the E-nine-one-one, which is currently estimated at about twenty-four thousand dollars. We expect that to change, but I'll get, again, I'll get to it in a minute. The other item that we had talked about at length is our ERP module. The ERP is Enterprise Resource Planning Module, and right now, we are currently using, currently using Black Mountain software, right? Black Mountain software. I want to make sure I got the name right. And, uh, Black Mountain is, has been a good pro, has, has been a good program for us. However, our court module, for instance, is one of the items that would work within an ERP, and it's outdated. We've had this conversation already. So what we've proposed to do with this year was originally said, hey, we've got to update that ERP. Well, that's a lot of money, to the tune of about a quarter million dollars. It can, it can get up there really quickly. We, that was one of the things that we immediately cut. We could not afford that. One of the conversations that we had during this process was, well, can we choose which one we want and then implement this module and work into it a little bit more? And that way, you don't have to take the whole thing all at once. That's exactly what we're doing. So this budget does propose to address the most needed area, which is the court module. And with, from the weekly reports, you can tell that we, obviously, they do a lot of work. So the better software we can have for them, the better it's going to be. And, uh, staff is still going through the process of that selection, but we are comfortable with our budget estimate at this time. Moving on from the general fund, we're going into enterprise funds, which, in this case, water, sewer, sanitation, and airport. Enterprise funds are intended to generate sufficient revenue to meet their operating obligations. That's why they can set rates. Rates were increased for water, sewer, and sanitation by two point four percent in May of two thousand and eighteen, based on the CPI. Cash balances can only be used for operations of that particular fund. We commonly have this conversation about every year, well, can this group pay for it or this group pay for it? And that's not really how it works. Enterprise funds, it's, it's hard for them to move money outside of their respective funds. Not absolutely impossible, but highly difficult. So keeping that in mind, we start with the water fund. Water fund revenues of one point one million with the cash transfer of twenty-four thousand, operational expenditures of two point five, and capital expenditures of over one point six million dollars. We do have replacement of water lines through North Federal Reconstruction Project and the planned for the third and final phase. I love saying final phase, and I know Kyle likes to hear it as much as I do, for the Riverton Water Supply Project. But keeping in mind that this project does operate over multiple-year seals. So in a year from now, you're going to hear me stand here and say, guess what? We're still working on the project. It's expected. It's absolutely part of the plan, but it is something that is going to take a few years. Sorry. Our sewer fund revenues are at two point five, almost two, approaching two point six, with almost twenty thousand dollars from reserve. Operational expenditures of one point nine and capital expenditures of six hundred and thirty-three. Highlights in this include replacement of sewer lines through North Federal. Again, this is an ongoing project, but an Alstel Street Sewer Replacement, which we're also partnering with the one percent on. And we will get into some of the one percent expenditures in a moment. Sanitation fund at two, almost two point five million dollars, includes transfers from cash of fifty thousand dollars. Operational expenditures of two point one four seven and, uh, capital expenditures of three hundred and thirty-eight. We do have replacement of a sanitation truck, and one of the larger ones in here is the remediation, a possible remediation of the old landfill. We're doing a study this, we have budgeted the study dealing with the phyto remediation option that was discussed a little bit by Steve Molt from Ingberg Miller at a previous meeting. So that is budgeted. We have planned for it. One of the things that we've seen within the sanitation fund when we look at it is that the reserve in that fund is, is much healthier than others. The thing to keep in mind and why we don't jump up for joy right now is that one of the options for that remediation, if we have to walk that path, and I say if, is that that could cost a total of about ten million dollars, even with funding from the state at seventy-five percent, you're still, and then some additional monies. One million dollars isn't going to touch our, isn't necessarily really going to touch our side of that as much as we would like. However, that doesn't mean that's the steps we're taking. But we do, don't necessarily get super excited about the super, uh, the super healthy sanitation reserve. So, uh, it's, it's worth, it's worth noting. As we talk about the airport, I can't help but bring up the good work that everybody, uh, Bass Team, Kyle, everybody that has been part of this, the other communities, Lander, the county that have provided funding for us for our minimum revenue guarantee. It has been a county-wide effort for a number of years now to try to get, to keep this moving and to move, uh, move towards more success, and we're having it. The conversation with Sky West the other week was encouraging. And as we work forward and move forward, we have some unknowns. This year, airport revenues are estimated at about one point two, little over. This includes restricted PFC revenue and PFC cash from capital to, that totaled out at about, uh, hundred and ninety thousand dollars and a general fund subsidy of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Operational expenditures of about six hundred thousand, but capital expenditures of about six hundred and forty-two. This includes a seal coat and airfield marking at about five hundred and twelve, crack seal project, which you've already addressed, at about a hundred thousand dollars, and rehab of taxiway A pre-designed for about thirty thousand dollars. So as we move forward, we're looking at this, we all know that this conversation is ongoing, but the amount of work that has been put in has been so significant and done so well that it's worth moving forward and, and continuing to work, uh, continuing to work towards this end. One of the, well, we've hit the major, uh, enterprise funds, and we have a handful of other ones, which include the Economic Development Fund. Earlier in the presentation, I said, hey, we're going to have a little bit more of a conversation about this. The twenty-four thousand dollars that you see there is the, is held in the Economic Development Fund is to support the annual payment made to the Depot Foundation with regard to the Riverwalk. We have a few more years left on that. Do we know? I mean, we have a few years left on that. Once that is paid off, that will transfer over to the city from the Depot Foundation. You know it most recently as the site of the new dog park. That is that land over there. We put up cameras this year over in that area that are really well done. That's, uh, that's the Depot Foundation. That's the Riverwalk. That's where that goes. We also talked about the nine-one-one fund and our E-nine-one-one system. The twenty-four thousand dollars you have estimated here is likely to change. Why? Because our new system will allow us to better, uh, denote what calls come in and where they originate, and therefore, those are, that will help drive our revenue there, and we'll have a better understanding of where the calls are coming from. So that may change very much. We're going to be watching that this year with the installation of the new, of the new system. You also have one percent sales tax revenues and expenditures to the tune of about almost two million dollars, including Village Drive, East Bell Sewer and Resurfacing, College View Concrete, and Gannett Drive-Davis Lane. This is one of those items, if we look at two million dollars and you look at the size of your budget and how tight it's been, how amazing it is that we have our one percent. This does such great things for our community. You got to see it this year. We got to be responsive as an organization to needs on Gannett and Davis, but we've also watched our force committee work diligently over the years to attempt to identify and address the challenges that we have in our different streets. The, the amount of information they go through, that you, if you go back a little wi, a little ways and read the analysis they've done is superior. And I think that should be touted that they're doing a great job as a whole. As an organization, we're doing a good job of using those funds diligently for the reasons that we said we were going to use them. So we look forward to not only these projects, but upcoming projects in showing the community exactly what, uh, their funding is being used for. Keeping in mind, we also have debt service. In enterprise funds, water fund, sewer fund, and airport fund totaling about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. This is ongoing. This will increase as we begin to take some of our funding, and we do have some loans that are going to be part of our other projects. So this number will change. This isn't a stagnant number. One of the, we talked a little bit about how, um, enterprise funds cannot, it cannot give money, but enterprise funds are supposed to be self-sufficient, and as such, enterprise funds are able to pay for services that they otherwise would have had to pay for or to do themselves. For instance, if they needed a finance director or another position that is already existing in the general fund, they can take and pay for some of that position and as, and instead of actually having to go get a whole new person. Those are considered administrative allocations. This year, that totals almost about one point two million dollars. It is meant to reflect the true cost of running general purpose government and the business enterprises by allocating certain costs. This is a slight increase from the previous year, but it does allow us to offset some of those costs to the general fund. So we have those services provided while not making the enterprise funds foot the entire bill for them. This year's contracts for services, as we have done in the past, are about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. They were about two ninety-three last year. The city will contract with ten agencies that receive funding, and they are as follows. Youth Services at twenty thousand, Volunteer Fire Mid at eighty-five hundred, and three thousand dollars to pensions, Volunteers of America at fifty-five thousand, Good Samaritan Center at fifty-five hundred, PAWS at forty thousand, Chamber of Commerce at twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, Injury Prevention at five thousand, Big Brothers Big Sisters at two thousand, Our Recreation at a hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty, and Eagles Hope at six thousand dollars. With regard to personnel and compensation, um, last year, if you remember, we had some reductions in force, as well as we've had, um, we had a freeze across the board. So there were no step increases or the like. This year is slightly different. Step increases and change in position increases are budgeted. What that means is we have a ten-step process. If an individual, uh, does well in their job, they are allowed to be, uh, moved up an entire step. That step, um, is budgeted within this year. Position increases if someone goes from, say, an operator one to an operator two. Those are, those are budgeted. Why? Because if an individual is doing, is certified at the new level and doing the new job, then of course, they should be paid as such. However, when we get into this, a lot of people say, well, is that a raise or is that not a raise? Okay, and that's why we're a little more specific in our verbiage. A lot of times, people mean, is there a, is there a cost of living raise? Hey, CPI went up, um, four percent. Are you giving four percent? No, we are not proposing a cost of living adjustment, nor are we proposing a, any sort of salary study modifications, which happen when an entire salary structure is evaluated compared to other communities. That's not something that's done. We are staying within our steps, our step and grade process without modifications. Health insurance is scheduled to increase this year, and the increase is proportionally absorbed by both employer and employee, and these different percentages based on the different plans. I would point out that we do have a new healthcare option, a new health, uh, health insurance option that, um, Kristen Watson developed as another offering, which has the potential to, uh, provide some savings for this year, as well as a different option for our employees. I thought this was a really great item that was worth noting because it actually provides individuals options and a savings. That's a very rare thing to get both of those things in the same sitting. So that was very much appreciated, and Kristen did a great job of that. We do have a half percent increase in retirement as being paid by the city with this year. Reserves. We have talked about the eighteen point five percent, and as in the past, I would congratulate council on their efforts to set aside this and attempting to keep this line. This addresses any unforeseen expenditures that we might have or any challenges that we might run into. Keeping in mind, the eighteen, this is, and this is more my philosophy than it is absolute rule. Keeping a reserve is absolutely a good idea and is absolutely necessary. Why? Because we cannot, if we could predict what's going to happen a year from now and where we're going to be sitting, wow, we'd be incredible creatures, and we can't do that. We do our best to try to manage within our budget, but there are things that happen. There was a time that I had a water plant drop an entire power line. It cost fifty-eight thousand dollars we didn't have. Well, it was either that or figure out where else to get water, and guess what? We did. And we pulled it out of reserve. All funds are projected to maintain the eighteen point five percent reserve. However, some of the money that is sitting and is part of that is money that's al, already allocated to the North Federal Project. So we are going to have to keep a little bit of an eye on this as we move forward. It may be next year we have enough to make the eighteen point five percent, or maybe we don't. That's going to depend on a number of items that I couldn't intelligently talk to you about at this point. It's a little early in the game. But we are confident that we will still have reserves and we're not, you know, by any means, running it near zero. But that is something that everybody should consider, that those numbers do include some money that's going to be spent. Before I get, before I finish out, this is the second to the last one, so I'm almost done. There are a couple items that I do want council to be aware of. We talked a little bit about sales tax. This is going to be important for us to track over the next year. We have some new businesses that are starting here, and I'm incredibly happy to hear that. I'm incredibly happy to hear that we have, uh, some storefronts that are going to be getting filled, and, uh, hopefully, that's going to put us all in the right direction, and we're happy about that. I believe our community is moving forward, and that's a great thing to be able to stand here and say. But this is something that do, we do want to be diligent about. We are probably going to have conversations with you throughout the year about this. You get quarterly reports from MEA, uh, for the quarterly financials. Those are important. We talked a little bit about the airport, and the airport is receiving, um, some subsidy from, and we also, from not only the general fund for operations, but we also fund other parts of that. Our partners throughout the community, um, the Depot Fan, uh, you know, uh, whether it be the Depot, uh, ID Inc. funding forty-eight thousand dollars, I said that, yeah, forty-eight thousand dollars for next year already. That's something that they've committed to. That's very much appreciated from our partners. We have commu, people that are coming out and, and really being supportive, but long-term, we always want to drive towards a sustainable funding model, a, uh, something stable. And that is, that is a goal to have. I don't have a great answer for you on how we get there. But that is a conversation that as a group we need to have. We have talked a little bit about stormwater as a potential utility. This is legislation that we are looking at right now. The mayor and I will attend WAM tomorrow. We'll start driving tomorrow morning. We'll be gone for three days. And a part of that is talking about the legislation that's coming forward. So when we propose, uh, we're going to propose a legislative agenda. That is one of those items, these are the things that, do you want us to support this or not support this? How much effort do we want to put into this? Because it does take our involvement, and these are the items that actually have a very large impact on your budget as a whole. Keeping that in mind, direct distribution and funding reform continue to be a topic of conversation. Never do we go to one of these meetings where they're, well, what if we did this? And then you have to start running those numbers in your head about what that means for your community. Well, what if we do this? And then you start doing it again. As the state continues to speak about how they allocate funding, what is allowed, different, uh, if we allow a community to do this, do we have to fund them with direct distribution? Direct distribution is a lot of money. And as such, we want to make sure that, you know, we're being thoughtful about that. So that's going to be part of your legislative discussions, which are going to be probably a little more prevalent in the coming year. Health insurance. We love to tell you that because of the efforts, especially of our staff, especially of Kristen and the work that she did, that, um, the state has said that we are allowed to, we are going to be allowed next year, because it came after we already up with, up for the coming year, to be on state insurance. The potential for that to save us more than a hundred thousand dollars and to be able to save our employees, a significant amount of money is amazing. That is a big win for us. We hope that holds out throughout the year, and we hope that that gives us everything that we think it's going to. But that is a great option for us, and we are very appreciative of the consideration. So we look forward to having that conversation and telling you what those numbers are really going to be. There are a couple items that are more specific that I'm going to bring your attention to, not because they're in your budget, but because there are items that you're probably going to have to talk about in this coming year, um, when we make modifications. We know we do mid-year budget amendments. We know we do end-of-the-year, uh, final budget. Those are coming on the twenty-fifth. One of them is a project that is split between the water and the sewer department, which is our meter replacement program. And this is a replacement of all the meters within our community. Why? Because we're largely not able to support them. They're not being supported anymore. That is a total of how much? I'll bark.
Two million.
Approximately a two million dollar meter replacement program. The short answer to that is we're looking for funding. Why? Because taking a two million dollar note and then spreading it out over two, over two funds is a large amount of money. And that is a rate increase that we're, we'd like to try to find some offsetting revenue. Do we probably have some matching for that? Of course we do. But, uh, if we could get that down significantly and make it e, uh, an easier item, that's going to be important. The reason we want council to understand this is- The reason we want council to understand this is, sometime during this year, we're going to have to come forward and say, well, it's not here right now, we found these funds, or here's the mechanism we were proposing to move forward. That's going to be important, because the existing infrastructure, or the existing equipment that we have, will not sustain long-term. A lot like the court module that we've talked about, that's going to be one of the items. The other item is, we currently have, in a staffing, is we currently have three vacancies within the police department. We are currently proposing on staffing two of those. Now, to be clear, we are not saying that we will never staff the third. Right now, we have candidates, and we are interviewing. We have to get those candidates, get them through the academy, train them, get them on the street, before we can have that conversation. This organization has been staffed six months in the last, how often?
35 years.
Six months in the last 35 years. So it is not completely reasonable to think that we are going to be completely, completely up to staff this year. However, watch, I'm going to do, I'm going to propose this, and then all of a sudden, we'll be able to be full-staffed, and I'll have to be back here talking to you. Things like the $84,000 that we put aside are some of those cushions that we want to make sure that are in place, in case we have to take that step mid-year. We don't want to redo, we are not proposing to reduce the size of the police department. Let me say that again. We are not proposing to reduce the size of, the number of officers we have. That is not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is trying to allocate funding in a given year. So if, we may come back and have a conversation, but right now, we are allocating for two of those officers to be replaced, and our department is in the process of recruiting those officers right now. With that being, with that being said, I wanted to take just a moment to tell you how appreciative I am of everybody that is sitting here today, and all of you for the work that you've done on this budget. The group that you have here has done such an exceptional job of putting together this budget for the last three months. You're talking more than $25 million in expenditures that have been gone over more times than I can count. MEA is so sick of seeing me at this point, that I think she might take, might take about a month off after the 25th, and I wouldn't blame her one bit. The entire staff, Kristin's work, getting the numbers together and discussing personnel, finding new options for us as a city, for both our employees, but also that helps save us money. Every individual on this team has done such a great job of making the hard decisions, because I assure you, every decision they've had to make this year has been hard. It's, what can I get, how can I limp it along? And they're having to do that analysis on the fly, and have the conversations over and over again, and then have to deliver tough news to some of their employees as well, hey, that didn't make this budget, we'll try again next year as part of our capital plan. For all of their work, and for all of the time that was put forward by council, we are very appreciative. Thank you again to everybody, they've done such an exceptional job. We would recommend, with that, that's a very, that's probably the longest staff report I'm going to give you. With that, I recommend approval of Resolution 1392, and the fiscal year 2020 budget as presented. We would answer any questions once the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read Resolution Number 1392 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Resolution Number 1392. A resolution providing for the 2019-2020 budget for the City of Riverton for the fiscal year beginning the first day of July 2019, and ending the 30th day of June 2020 inclusive.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing regarding Resolution Number 1392.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hancock, and a second by Councilmember Schatz, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state law and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to speak?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to address the proposed budget for the Volunteers of America. It's a significant reduction from what our expectations were, and it will adversely affect our operations and services that we can provide. What I would like to do, if maybe we could schedule a time later this week, Thursday or Friday, to address what services we'll be able to provide with the revised budget.
Okay. We appreciate that opportunity to meet with you. Tony and I will be out through the end of the week, so we'll have to move that to the first of the week, the first of the following week, if possible.
All right. Let me, if I could, share that information with my counterparts from Sheridan. They were planning to attend a meeting, if we could get one scheduled this week, but I'll see what their schedule's like, and then get back together with you gentlemen, and see what we can work out.
We will be in Sheridan if they need to have some preliminary.
That might work out even better yet. Let me talk with them, and I'll get together and find out what your schedule is for Sheridan, and we get something scheduled so we can meet.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion from Councilman Rota, and a second from Councilwoman Borders. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the Resolution Number 1392.
Motion to approve 1392 for the year 2020 budget.
We have a motion from Councilman Larson, and a second from Councilwoman Schatz. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the special counsel meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Hancock, and a second from Councilman Rota. Any further discussion on adjournment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. We stand adjourned. This meeting of the Riverton City Council stands adjourned at 8:16.